We're grateful for this opportunity we have to be here together as town council members. And we're thankful for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask thee to bless us with thy spirit, that the things that are said and done will be in accordance with thy mind and will. We pray thou of us and watch over councillor Bangery and his wife as they're away on holidays and keep them safe and bring them home safely. And we pray for these things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
So we would like to welcome you to our meeting today is the fifth day of March 2019. It is our CCW. We would like to welcome Corey McCarthy back. We're so glad to have him back and we're grateful for his son Nate that's been helping and his wife Tammy. We also are thrilled to have Reeve Jimbuster. We'd like to welcome you and Kevin Quinton. We're happy to have you as well. And we have exciting news from our reporter, Gunner Gibb. Gunner, do you want to tell us your exciting news?
I got called to serve a Sam and Oregon mission and I leave July 4th.
Awesome. So we're going to have you until then. We're so glad. Thank you. We also would like to introduce you to our delegation, which is Mr. John Switzer, and he is from Alberta Health Services. We're glad to have you. Thank you for the opening prayer. And we'd like to, councillor Bangery is not here today. He is away, but he will be back next week. Are there any additions to adopt to the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as given.
Perfect. All in favor? Good. Now we would like to have our delegation. We'll have Mr. John Switzer. Go ahead. Thank you.
I think so. So that's me. It's a bit of a mouthful when it comes to a title, but essentially we, our team, I'm based in Lethbridge, have been in Lethbridge for a number of years dating back to the Schnuck Health days, so I'm familiar with the facilities here. But one of the tasks that our team has is putting together the packages for capital submission for major capital projects. And I think that's why I've been asked to come today, just give a bit of a background on the process, the steps, and what's really involved in getting projects in front of government for potential approval. Oh, I was going the wrong way. I'll just go back a little bit. In our world, there's basically two types of projects when it comes to government funding. There's major capital, which are typically over $5 million, and minor capital projects. My area of knowledge and work is primarily in the major capital projects. That number can fluctuate a little bit, but it really determines kind of the path that projects will take. No matter what path we take, I think this, you're probably familiar with this scenario, demand is always outstripping the resources that are available to us. Some of the key demands are identified there. I think in the case of the Carston facility, it's probably the lower to the building condition and changing service delivery. I'll just quickly go through the minor capital project process for you. These are funded by government under a program that's called the Infrastructure Maintenance Program, or IMP. And again, these are the projects that are under $5 million typically, and they are the two categories, functional projects, which are smaller renovations or small additions, or preservation projects, again, maintaining the buildings as best we can. 2019, 20, AHS will get approximately about $100 million for the province for the IMP projects. And of that, that gets allocated out to the five different zones, and that will include all projects for the provincial programs such as lab and pharmacy, those types. South zone split out of the pie is approximately about $9 million this coming year, so roughly 9%. Out of that allocation, and this applies across the province, the direction we get from government is that 80% of the funding is to be allocated to preserving the buildings, preserving the assets, and 20% is, can be allocated to kind of renovations and addressing functional issues. The prioritization of both the functional and the preservation IMP is done entirely within AHS at a local zone level, so the sites will identify their top priorities. The project management team within our capital management group at AHS will do some preliminary costing.
And the projects are prioritized by his own leadership.
His own leadership.
And they go through a vetting process with government.
Just mostly for compliance.
And then, once they're approved, the zone, south zone in this case, is kind of off to the races with their, with their projects.
Prioritizing the projects is always a challenge. It's maybe perhaps a little easier on the preservation side. Again, we look at whether it's boilers or roofs, you look at the impact of what could happen if it's put off, and the probability, and that helps to try and make sure that the right projects rise to the top of the list and get addressed. So I'll move on to the major capital projects, and again, those are the over $5 million So these projects are funded where the IMP projects, you get more or less an envelope or a bucket of funding. These ones are funded project-specific, and these go up through the process and through the government steps with Alberta Health, Treasury Board, and ultimately government budget announcements. The identification of these projects is through the AHS annual multi-year facility infrastructure capital plan or capital submission. We don't call it a capital plan, that's, I'll get to that later. And that's a document that my team puts together annually. It's submitted to the Ministers of Health and the Ministers of Infrastructure and considered advice to the minister. So this was the most recent version. Timeframes for this I'll get to, but this one, for a number of different reasons, was kind of officially submitted in September. Usually it's a little earlier. This document is available, takes a little while, but it is eventually available on the web through government websites or AHS. You can be found there as well. This year's submission, there were nine projects put forward to government. Carston was not one of the nine projects. In addition to the top priority projects, we also identify a fairly lengthy list of kind of future potential projects, and that did include Carston. So there's 125 projects on the list, and that's across the province, so the five zones, the provincial programs, cancer care, kidney care, some of those. Carston has been on the list in previous years and continues to be one of the top priorities for the south zone. There were, or there have not been, and nor, I guess nor do we anticipate, any approvals based on the 2018 submission. There were a couple of approvals from the previous year, the 2017 submission, and they were primarily planning dollars for projects. But back in 2017, that's when there was the big, big announcement from government, and that was about $4.5 billion for health projects across the province, and some of those are still in the planning stage, as you would suspect. We're not anticipating announcements in the next couple of weeks leading up to the election, but you never know, I guess. So the process, this is kind of a diagram that, that shows the sequential process. While the diagram is simple and straightforward, getting projects approved is not as simple and straightforward as, as the diagram shows, but this does represent what goes on. So the first step, and this is actually just about to start happening in the coming weeks, is I, our teams will put out a call to the zones, the provincial programs, Covenant Health, asking them to review last year's submission and make sure that what was presented as a top priority there is still their highest need, and review the lengthy list of future projects, again, making sure that they're still relevant. Sometimes there are, things get solved in different ways. So that's the first step. So we, in the coming weeks, month or two, we will collect that information from across the province and gather that up and put a package together that then goes to Alberta Health Services Executive Leadership Team, and they will review all of the requests from across the province. And in the last couple of years, there's been more consultation with health and infrastructure than there has been in previous years, so they've become more involved in the, I guess, the discussion about what the priorities are and ultimately what goes into the capital Once ELT has reviewed and kind of landed on the top priority list, it goes through AHS's board, financial board, and then eventually it's incorporated into the capital submission document, which is subsequently submitted, as I said earlier, to Ministers of Health and Infrastructure. Once it's submitted there, again, typically its timeframe is in June, Alberta Health reviews the documents that, or the projects that we've put forward as our top priority and submits the, what is the former health capital plan to Treasury, and those are the lists that ultimately get reviewed along with all the other ministries, transportation, education, and those are the projects that are up for potential approval. Typically, the approvals come out in budget announcements, and then if the project is approved, the last box indicates it's Alberta Infrastructure who currently delivers the The two documents that are noted at the bottom, AHS Needs Assessments and Infra Business Cases, typically those are prerequisites for a project to be approved. There are a few times where there's anomalies, where projects may get approved for different reasons, but generally those are, those are the essential documents to move a project through the, through the process.
John, can I just ask you something? We had an AHS needs assessment done for this hospital.
Correct. Yes.
And the business case had not been completed.
No.
The infrastructure assessment had been done.
Yeah, there's been a, there's been a number of studies over the years, some of them dating back, that I was involved with back in 2003, I think was, we did a feasibility study. Infrastructure has their facility assessments that they do on a, I think they try and evergreen them and recycle them or refresh them every five years, and those, it's been called a number of different things, but over the last version, VFA is what it's referred to now, and that's the company that Infrastructure does. So yeah, there is a facility assessment that is done. That's a little different, but that's just information that we would use to inform the needs assessment and ultimately the business case.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So I don't, maybe I can pause there if there's any questions. I will get into a bit more about the, about the actual documents and what, what's involved in that, but if there's any questions about the, the process as it's presented there.
Go ahead. I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Again, prioritization, perhaps a little different than when you're dealing with replacing a boiler or a, or a roof. Again, we look at the risks of whether the action is taken or not taken and the strategic value, and ideally, we, we hope that the projects that rise to the top are the ones that kind of present both the highest strategic value and are addressing significant risk. I will say that over the years, we have presented the capital submission with projects in a ranked order. Doing that ranking is always challenged when you've got projects across the province. We've moved away from that. Alberta Health doesn't always follow what our ranking is, so it just created an awkward situation where we would say this project is number one and that one's five, and they would approve five and not approve one, so we've moved away from that.
We noticed.
So I did mention the needs assessment. So these are done by AHS, and they focus on the operational need, service, again, as the name applies. We always try and make sure that they're supported by data. If there's statistics, absolutely, those are what we look for to, to validate a need. We avoid referencing what the capital solution is in the needs assessment. It really is focusing on the service aspect and not what the, the building could or should be.
Can I ask you a question regarding that? When we did that study on the needs assessment, we did not have really the issue of, of drug addiction, et cetera. That is really a problem now.
Yeah.
And so, has this been taken in consideration? As a revision to that document?
Yes. That might, might, coming up.
Oh, good.
The other thing that we do capture in the needs assessment, because we, we don't know the building costs yet, but we, we are able to start looking at what the operational costs are. So the finance teams within AHS will generate some operational cost if there's service changes or service increases. And we have sign-off processes with senior levels of AHS and key stakeholders to make sure that everyone's aware of kind of where the, where the project could potentially be heading. So we submit the needs assessment to Alberta Health, and they review it and make sure if they're in agreement. That then leads us to the next step, which in this case is the, the business case. So the business case, as I mentioned, is completed by Alberta Infrastructure. They, in almost all circumstances, outsource that to consultants. It takes the needs assessment, it isn't, we're not starting from scratch by any means, but it takes the information that's been developed in the needs assessment and does a little bit of a deeper dive. The key thing here is though it takes what the operational requirements are and translates them typically into space needs, which then allows Infrastructure to develop their potential building costs. Again, it is focused on the capital solutions where the needs assessment is more on the operational side. And again, this is all done with, in close, intimate work with the key AHS stakeholders. And when a needs assessment, sorry, when a business case is complete, there, again, there's a similar sign-off process, and then it goes to Health, and then a project essentially is eligible for funding consideration. So for Carston, the hospital specific, again, there's been previous studies done many years ago, but more recently, there was the Health Service Plan that was developed in March 2015, and there's a fair number of people involved in that and lots of community engagement. We did the original needs assessment in 2013, and we've recently updated, and it's just in the process of getting sign-off now. And that's where we've captured some of the changes in the community, and those are reflected in the current document. And any other, any other data, population changes and things like that, that's essentially why we, we did the update, these things. Sometimes projects can potentially have a little longer shelf life, depending on volatility of the community or what's happening, but this one had been a number of years, as you can see, so it was important that we updated that. So our hope is, we'll, we'll be submitting the updated needs assessment to Health in coming weeks, and we've been lobbying to proceed with the business case. I'll add that Alberta Health and Alberta Infrastructure are involved when we develop the needs assessments and business cases, so they, they see drafts and generally when we submit the final version to them, there's, there may be a few questions, but we've, we've already gone through that communication process, so they're not, they're not caught off guard or taken by surprise or anything.
When you use the word lobbying, what exactly are you trying to tell me?
Well, we have, we meet, there's a steering committee, a working committee, like a working committee, I guess, that, the same, the people that write the needs assessments and the infrastructure folks who do the business case, we, we know what the, what's coming up for potential needs assessments and business cases. So again, I can say at that meeting that we think this is an important project, and Health tends to agree, but that may not be enough to trigger the next step, so. Again, I, my, my ability to lobby for a project is very limited.
So can I ask you a question that you may possibly not answer?
Yeah.
Is that at this time where political pressure should be applied?
Well, I guess, I think any time is good, because, because these projects take, they have such a long period that it takes to see a project from start to finish, so.
So now is a fine time. You don't need to say so.
Yeah, well, as I say, we're about to submit the needs assessment, the business case is the next step, so anything that can, can trigger that is, is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Do they take into consideration community involvement in pushing forward? There's a number of people in the community now that would like to start pushing a little harder for this.
Yeah, I don't know. I, we had a bit of this conversation when we met earlier in the year. I, because I have a provincial responsibility, I get to see. And I, I see or I witness lots of communities who are very engaged, and their projects haven't materialized either, not to dissuade anything, but that's just the reality of when there are so many projects in need across the province. It's, it's a challenge. And some people, some communities are quite vocal, some are kind of, well, I don't know, maybe more trusting of the process is the right word, but I've, I've seen all aspects of it, so.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have a question, too.
Go ahead, councillor.
Something that's been rolling around in my mind is how we go from the top five to not on the top nine, now where, where are we?
Well, the question was answered, that the ranking does not make no difference.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference anymore. I mean, it's just, it's very frustrating when we have high hopes, when we heard we were on the top five list.
Yeah.
And then you tell us now that we're not even on the top nine, I'm thinking, ooh.
Yeah, but you're in the next.
But anyways.
Yeah, it, it may be of no consolation, but yeah, I understand the frustration, and you're not alone, and there's a number of projects that have been on the list and off the list, and again, I.
I guess one of the biggest frustrations that I have is I keep on seeing the Lethbridge Regional Hospital getting added on to parking lots and cancer clinics and all the different phases that are getting done there. They are right up at the top always, and, and I realize that they have to have those things done. There's no question about that. I understand that. But somewhere along the line, these other people that are less important need to take a priority.
Well, the only thing that I can see is that rural hospital can take pressure away from regional hospital.
Yeah.
And that's probably something that is of importance, too.
Yeah, we have surgeons that are doing surgery from Lethbridge in our hospital now, because they can't get operating time over there. Anyways.
No, I, I, I understand, and I've heard that, and you'll hear the, Red Deer's been quite vocal lately, and they'll say, well, Red Deer's the forgotten because all the money goes to Calgary at Ambitance, so it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough situation. So the next steps, like as I say, we, we're about to update the 2019 capital submission that will be submitted in the spring. I didn't have it there, but we talked about it earlier, the, the needs assessment update will be submitted in the coming days and weeks. And most importantly then, I guess, the next step for Carston, for the hospital project here, would be initiating the business case, and that is subject to direction from Alberta Health to Alberta Infrastructure. There are a few things that are kind of happening or have happened that maybe helped this. There's a number, I don't know if you recall, but the government had talked about a, I think they originally were thinking of kind of a prototypical hospital build like they did in the eighties, that there's a number of them in the south zone. They kind of moved off that, but we did develop a toolkit for rural hospitals, rural urgent care and advanced ambulatory, and that was done jointly by the, by the three groups, but it hasn't been, hasn't been trialed. And I think Carston would be a, a good place to, to run that project. What it would do, it would fast-track the work, because it's, it, in the document, it lists what the, kind of what services are kind of core to a hospital-serving community like this, what are discretionary, and then it also has a lengthy list of what the spaces would be, so you can kind of tick off what you need from a service perspective, and it will fairly quickly get you to the point where you have a functional program which identifies all the space needs and, and the cost potentially for, for a project. That hasn't been done anywhere yet in the province. Again, it's, and it's targeted for rural hospitals or urgent care, ambulatory care centers, so.
So can you maybe give us a timeframe for possibly a trial?
It would probably take six to eight months, I would think, to do that, once, once you've got the go-ahead to start. Again, we haven't, we haven't run, run through that scenario yet using the document. Business cases can take eight months to a year, depending on how significant the project is. This one certainly would be a significant project.
So when a go-ahead is given, then there's about eight months delay?
Yeah, I would think roughly. Again, depending on how quickly the, or how much the toolkit serves its intended purpose, I would think six to eight months would probably be a fairly realistic timeframe to complete a business case.
Thank you.
See Carston Rotary Club request. Requesting councillor.
What the heck happened there? Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is, you can read it, this is, I won't say it's a canned response, but we could.
Representation, eight. Questions?
We do get requests from many communities concerned about projects, and I think this, this fairly accurately sums up the, kind of a reasonable response to, to the many queries we get about projects. Questions?
I think, I think you capture pretty well what was of interest to us, and we are wondering, can we have a copy of that presentation? Would that be possible?
Yeah, I can send it to Jeff.
To leave it with Jeff?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. So if I, if I understand, right now, we off the radar, but not too far off.
I think that's a realistic, as vague as that is, the project is, it has been in discussion before about potential move into a business case.
But that is, in this case, there is a possible trial with a new model for rural hospital?
Yeah, the tool, having the tool, I think, is, is an opportunity that.
So how does that and a business case kind of correlate?
It will actually, they will use that to create the business case.
I get it.
Yeah.
All right. So that is why you say it could speed the process up?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
And actually, it will, it will almost go beyond a business case, because you could, you could have a, the foundation of a functional program, which would be the next step, where you actually get in and you identify every single room and how big each room has to be and where they need to be in relationship to each other. be, and where they need to be in relationship to each other, the toolkit will do some of that, but it'll also bring forward the material that you need.
So who does that assessment, in fact, who, who uses that tool?
That would be, infrastructure would, would have the consultants, they engage to use the tool.
All right.
And it, the other advantage is, then you're getting a consistent approach, so if, if there's a number of projects going on in the province, the different, potentially two or three different architects would be given the same toolkit to use, so your deliverables should be more consistent.
I get you.
And the spaces should be consistent from, from site to site, we, it would eliminate some of the customization, I guess that could happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Did you have anything else?
No.
We sure appreciate your coming, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you could leave those notes, send them to Jeff, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send Jeff a PDF version, if that's easier.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, drive safe.
You can give the chance to the gallery if they want to stay or if they want to go.
Uh, we will just, if the gallery would like to stay or go, you're more than welcome to, either way, see you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
All right, as far as adoption of minutes, any concerns with the minutes? Can we adopt the minutes?
I'll move it.
Councillor Silk?
From February 5th, 2019, I'll move adoption of those minutes.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? We'll move on to number six, bylaws and policies, it's my understanding we have nothing in there, so we will move on to number seven, other business, so this is Fourth Avenue West Speed, it's my understanding, our bylaw officer, Brad Larson, we'd love for you to come forward and explain to us what's going on with that, please.
Sure.
He kind of took away your podium, so.
Yeah, I guess.
Take Jeff's chair.
It's all good.
So Fourth Avenue West Speed is what we're here to talk about, that's true?
Yeah, correct.
All right. So essentially, the, the biggest thing is that I keep receiving complaints on a weekly, monthly basis about what is the speed limit on Fourth Avenue West? And that's a good question, frankly. Thirty K is the answer that is the easiest to give, because that's what I'm told it is, but even if I were to drive it as an impartial viewer, I have a hard time articulating that that whole street is thirty kilometers an hour right now.
Right.
The only reason I say that is because all the paint is covered in stone. So that's where, I think we're running into an issue, now, the other thing I look at is, is it valuable, or, is that, that's probably not the right word, but, is it worth it, I guess, to be thirty kilometers an hour on that whole stretch of road? At Town Square, absolutely, at the elementary school, at the ju, uh, sorry, the senior high school, absolutely, that are very, very much don't need to be thirty zones, the rest of the street, I don't think it's articulatable that it should be a thirty zone, that's my feeling of as a law enforcement officer, and as a law enforcement officer, I also see the challenges that we, we have right now, because I will not rent a ticket on that street unless I'm in the school zones or in Town Square area, just because if it went to court, it's easily argued that, well, I didn't know it was a thirty zone, unless otherwise posted in urban municipalities, fifty. So.
So your suggestion would be, basically from Seventh to Fifth, it would, fiftieth, fifty, like it used to be, before the school, you know, where the playground zone starts, so.
Seventh to Fifth, yes.
And then, basically, past Fourth down to the high school, basically, would be fifty, through the temple area.
One, one unique wrinkle there is.
The temple area.
You might have been there, there was an incident on that crosswalk, and the kind of, the knee-jerk reaction at the time was, well, let's knock that down to thirty for a hundred yards.
Right where they're crossing by the Chinook Foundation.
Yeah, and so we had two lights, we knocked it down to thirty, and we did all that, again, it just chopped up that avenue as far as speed goes.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm suggesting we identify speed limits at fifty kilometers an hour outside of the thirty kilometer an hour zones, what I'm suggesting is that we get rid of the misleading signage, does that make sense?
The which?
The misleading signage, so the painted on thirty areas.
Right.
Instead of, we just identify, this is a school zone, this is a playground zone, this is a school zone, because we don't need to put up a fifty sign right after the playground sign at, on Fourth Avenue at Town Square.
So you, okay, it's a playground zone. So you just put up signs where it says this is end, end school zone and playground zone?
Which exists right now, so it says end scho, end playground zone, to me, that says, okay, I'm gonna speed up again.
Right.
And that's where people are getting themselves in trouble. So, I guess the question posed is, is there wanting to be enforcement of thirty kilometers an hour on that street, if so, then we need to get rid of the end playground zone signs? And just, I would suggest just making it a blanket thirty zone.
Councillor?
Your partner's down at the RCMP, how do they feel about this, because I used to walk around the temple all the time, and he was sitting there nailing guys right up to center in front of the temple.
Yeah, um, the sheriffs love it, Lethbridge traffic, traffic, love it, because they can get so many stops.
This was a ghost car, RCMP car that was getting them when I was there.
Yeah, so that's, that's Lethbridge traffic.
Okay.
So they love it, because they can annihilate stops right there, right?
Yeah.
They don't care, because they get to put it on a regular basis, and they don't live here. So, as, in-house RCMP, they would tend to agree with what we're bringing forward here.
So, help me understand for a second, right now, the traffic speed is thirty kilometer within the town area?
The whole thing, right from the pool up?
From Main Street to Ninth Street.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, the most logical way would be to take away all signs, but just have one sign that says thirty kilometer through, is that, what do you suggest?
If we wanted to keep it a thirty zone, my suggestion would be to put a thirty kilometer an hour sign in every block.
Yes, yes.
Because if you enter Fourth Avenue at, say, Fifth Street and go westbound, you would not know that that's a thirty kilometer an hour sign.
All right, so the other thing that I'm hearing is, oh, we keep the signs for the, the playgrounds and the temple and the school and whatever.
Okay.
And the rest become fifty.
Right.
Possibly.
Right.
So you just have from Fifth to Seventh, that'd be the only ones at thirty K, if that's what you're asking, and maybe Fourth, whatever.
Fifth to Seventh would be the only ones at fifty.
At fifty, that's what I mean, yeah, they'd be the only ones at fifty, and the rest, and everything else would be, would be thirty.
Or the temple block could also be fifty.
Yeah.
Because you, right now, we wouldn't be able to articulate that that's a playground zone.
Okay, so, past, past the seminary building?
Mm-hmm.
School.
Would be fifty.
Oh, there, going west.
Yeah.
Up to the Town Square.
Yes, yeah.
Can we, was that?
I don't have a problem with that either.
Councillor Silk?
Brad, I like simplicity, okay?
Yeah.
So do I.
Okay, for me, it's yank out the ambiguous signs, make it thirty, all the way from Main Street to, all the way down, and then everybody knows they gotta travel thirty.
Yes.
That's it, and if you don't like it, go on a different avenue.
Agreed, and my suggestion at that point would be to put thirty signs in every block.
Every block.
And now we're gonna.
Counselor Court?
I would agree with that, I worry about not having the temple block at thirty, because there's a lot of old people crossing that sidewalk, corner of the Chinook, every day, I'd like to keep it a little slower.
So if you put everything thirty, that solves a problem, doesn't it?
It does.
Everything's thirty all the way from Main Street to the.
Still get some complaints, because they wanna go faster, but then go down Fifth, they're, that's next one that I do.
I'll take a different road, then.
That's what I do.
I have something to say, um, so I think, I think it's very important to do it in the block, because there is tons of times where you come onto that street, and you don't know, am I stopping, am I going, am I going fifty, am I going thirty, you don't have a hot clue, and with the seniors home just right there, they're constantly using that crosswalk, because I live over there.
Yeah.
And it's just nice, if we go thirty, then it's not rocket science, anybody can figure it out.
Right.
I feel.
My suggestion, if we were to look at that, and this is coming from an enforcement perspective, again, is the Third Avenue at that point, if we're gonna do that for the temple on Fourth, we should look at doing it for Third Avenue between Second and Fourth as well.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
Which is reasonable.
Right, because there's a lot of people driving around that.
Extend it to Fifth, because that's really your by, that's really your.
Yep, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there as well.
So three blocks there.
Yes.
So how many more signs would that be, then?
A lot.
Yeah.
That would be yanking out.
You'd be taking down the, yeah.
We got a question.
School zone and.
Yeah.
It just is a lot of traffic around that temple.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of old people driving around that temple.
Yeah, we don't, we don't worry about it from a sign budget point of view, we're just, we just, the reason I put this on here is, it is one we hear about a lot, and you probably hear about a lot, so it's kind of this, it's got this political ramification to it, right?
Essentially, what we're looking for is for safety, right?
Yeah.
If we can en, enforce thirty kilometer an hour to improve safety in a town, then I would say we've done our job. It's not pleasing to a lot of people who are a little bit heavy on a pedal, but really, the truth of the matter is, safety requires measures of that sorts.
Councillor Silk?
I'd make a recommendation, do that you, that take the thirty kilometer sign that's right by the street on Third Avenue and move it up there.
Where, sir?
Right by the bridge, where you're coming across the bridge, but, get rid of that one, and put it up there, I'd be happy with that, too.
That one I completely agree with, with that thirty zone, that's a completely blind intersection.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is.
That one, as an enforcement perspective.
Counselor Court?
Clarification, Fourth Avenue, Third Avenue would be thirty kilometer zone from Second Avenue, basically, to Fifth, right, through the school zone.
Second Street, you mean?
Second Street, sorry, Second Street, Second Street would be three blocks of thirty kilometer an hour.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Right here.
Right.
And right there.
Oh, yeah, right there.
That's First Street.
Sorry, that's Sec, Third, Third, yeah, that's Third.
Who's on First?
It's Third Avenue to begin with, it said Third Avenue to begin with.
Because the high school, so we have to start right here.
So Second to Fifth.
That's the school zone, right from First, yeah, from First.
So there'd be three blocks thirty kilometer, and then after you got past the Town Square, you're, crank it up, I gotcha.
Mayor?
I thought you were making that recommendation, are you making that, I'll make that recommendation of.
What we just talked about.
What we just talked about.
Moving.
So putting in.
Fourth all the way.
Thirty all the way.
Third, from the high school to.
End of Town Square.
Fourth.
No, to Fifth.
Fifth.
To Fifth, yeah.
No, it'd be from.
Just past Town Square.
From First Street, yeah, from First Street.
To Fifth.
To Fifth, past the Town Square, and then they can go fifty from there, that makes sense.
That's fair.
Do we eliminate that thirty kilometer zone at the bridge, too, while we're on it?
Heck, you might as well make Town, Civic Center thirty kilometers an hour, just kidding.
What's your suggestion, Brad?
For Third Avenue East?
Yeah.
He wants to leave it there.
I would leave it there.
Would you?
Hundred percent.
It's because of the kids? The carriage lane that goes up?
Yeah, see, overtop that thing.
Second is just right on the other side of that bridge.
I, I live up that way, and I come across that bridge every day, and in my little car, I would have no idea if there's a kid down there.
Yeah, it's blank.
If I was flying over at fifty right now, I'd hammer him.
I think you need to leave it at thirty.
So we don't want hammering to happen?
No, no, no.
So we're gonna leave it?
True story.
Okay, sounds good, anybody else? Are we good, we're good on our recommendation?
So we're gonna, so we'll start fifty from Second Street East up the hill, right? Is that what you're saying? Oh, no, just to the playground?
It's a few feet past it, which it just is what it is, we're not changing anything in that hypothetical.
Just leave it as it is, then.
It's a charging place to the forest left.
So councillor, are we good on the recommendation? All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
No, um, councillor Brown, if we could, while I have Brad here, our next item on the agenda is the strategic review.
Correct, yes.
But if we could start, actually, with item fourteen, while Brad's here, then we can get that business done, and then he can be on his way, you know, it's the vehicles.
So that's the investigate and report back to councillor on potential bylaw amendment to cap the number of vehicles that can be associated to one property.
Yeah.
I would love that, that's great, thank you.
Uh, I took, I started digging in bylaws all throughout the province, couldn't find anything, so at that point, I posted, we have an association where I can pose questions to the peace officers in the province, I posed a question, does anybody have anything like this, where it doesn't fall under your entirely bylaw with relation to derelict vehicles, it falls where vehicles on the street are a large number from particular individuals or in particular households, the astounding answer that I got was, good luck, there's, aside from what places like Calgary and Edmonton view for large housing areas, like large housing complexes, where it's like local housing, community housing, things like that, where they issue parking permits to those particular housing communities.
Right.
There's, like, we could look at doing something like that per, per household in Carstens, I have a feeling that would be a convoluted mess, that just frankly, would be a convoluted mess, what I do, and what we continue to do, are things on the Traffic Safety Act for abandoned vehicles, so if somebody leaves a vehicle standing on the highway for more than seventy, seventy-two consecutive hours, that vehicle is considered abandoned, at which point I, by law, have to place a notice on the vehicle saying, has to be removed within the next seventy-two hours, otherwise it'll be towed, and you could receive a charge.
If I'm removed.
Yeah.
Towed, I'll, I'll. So let's say I leave my truck on the street for seventy-two hours, which will happen, because that's where I park it, and you leave me a notice, so I simply move it.
A centimeter.
You're gonna go.
Yeah, okay.
So at that point, I, like I said, when I leave the notice, and I chalk the tire, as long as that chalk mark is moved, whichever way.
So what about those vehicles that, uh, they've gone around them five times with the road grader, and there's like, a snowdrift three feet high?
Still have to follow the vehicle seizure and removal.
Pretty sure they haven't moved in seventy, pretty sure they haven't moved in seventy-two months.
Agreed, um, I still have to go there, place the notice, chalk the tires, and give that person due process to remove the vehicle themselves before I can tow it, um, let's use the, I towed a vehicle in November for being abandoned and not registered or insured, and Jeff and I had to sit in a meeting for two hours listening to somebody scream at us for it.
Cause?
Although.
We, yeah, we're good.
I do want to hear the moral of the story.
The moral of the story is, we're good, Jeff is good, I'm still.
She likes me, yeah.
And so did they have to pay a fine?
An impound fee.
Okay.
So I didn't charge the nice little old lady, I just frankly removed the vehicle, it was not registered for over a year.
Yeah.
And I removed it, and she ended up having to pay an impound fee at the tow company, that's set out by the tow company, I don't have anything to do with that at that point.
Right, right.
And that's what it came down to, was the daughter was unhappy, and we knew she was unhappy.
Counselor Court?
I just need some clarification here, so if a vehicle's registered, proper licensing, it can sit on that street, no problem?
You can't do nothing over it.
Unless it's for more than seventy-two consecutive hours, I place a notice, so say I.
So my Jeep, which I don't drive very often, sits on the street for four days, am I in trouble, then?
Technically, you have a bad idea of a vehicle.
On my land.
And that's why, councillor, we're not, I don't know that we've ever been, oh, seventy-two, seventy-two, seventy, these are ones that have been there for.
Ever.
Months.
Months, I have one I drive by every day, where, again, I know the guy, I know the, he lives there, good guy, he just has a work truck that for certain seasons doesn't move, it's his work truck, and he works seasonally with it, and so, right now, it hasn't moved for weeks, months even, and then he'll start again in March, and we're gone.
So you're not gonna ticket him?
But we haven't, right, because we know it's not abandoned.
Right.
Because we can find an owner, it's right in front of his home.
But the people I think we're referring to are those that have eight vehicles.
Yeah.
And they park them throughout the block where you're living, and you can't even park in front of your house, because their vehicles are parked in front of your house. Theoretically, by the law, we can't do anything about it, so that's what's frustrating, is as long as its license plate and registration is good to go, and we're moving it an inch every seventy-two hours, we can forget about it. Go ahead, Counselor Barnes.
Thank you. Um, so, we do have quite a few people in town that have multiple vehicles, and I, what, we have a garbage bylaw, if they have more than four bags of garbage, they gotta pay for the extra ones. Why don't we do something like that? If they have more than X number of vehicles...
Because it's not...
Charge them a ticket, a, a, a parking pass.
That's, that's...
Can you do that?
That's the point.
What I suggested at the beginning was...
I think it's a good idea.
The permitting, so then, I would suggest you need to hire a full-time person just to do that. I ca, I don't, I don't think I would have the time to go around and say, oh, no, that vehicle doesn't have a permit. Now, so you have family come for Christmas, do you have to come to the town office and apply for extended family permits? Like, how does that work?
I don't know, but I, I would think you're more concerned about those who are...
Agreed.
In town, and they have...
Right.
All those vehicles.
I totally understand where it's coming from, and I'm totally empathetic with the people that have to put up with that in their neighborhood, but at the end of the day...
Doesn't change anything. Does a permit change anything?
No.
Of course not.
It's really, I'm, you're gonna get a twenty-five dollar ticket from me.
Well, yeah, right.
We've seen, we've talked about a couple of other examples, I think around, like, if you live around the Lethbridge Hospital, for example.
Yeah.
Then there's...
Two-hour parking.
Yeah, so there's a specific type of parking around there, but the, that hospital creates a demand we're, we don't have here.
Right.
And we don't see businesses, institutions, that I'm aware of monopolizing parking in a residential area. Yes, you could argue, maybe a little bit around the temple, but you have the whole Temple Street Chapel parking lot.
Yeah.
Right.
That is generally where people go first, and then they go around the temple, not so much in residential areas. And I lived on Third Street West and would see it occasionally, but not a lot down my street. So, yeah, we did discuss that whole kind of idea, too, but...
Counselor Salk.
You implemented two-hour parking zone in front of the offending property.
Just show blow.
Well, then they're gonna park in front of your place.
Good luck.
They already are.
Can you imagine what a judge would say?
No, but I mean, exactly, there is a ton of amount of frustration, but...
Counselor Court.
Well, yeah, I understand the law, and then the intent of the law. I, I don't like the idea, people move to smaller communities like ours, so they can have bigger things, they wouldn't stay in Lethbridge and have four cars. I have a real hard problem with a permit that only allows you to have a certain number of vehicles. I understand they're pieces of junk, and they've been sitting there for months, get them out of here, but to, to lock it down to about three or four cars, and you can't have any more than that, I, I just don't, I don't like that.
Mayor.
What has me more concerned is those people in town that have multiple cars, because they're running really a business out of their garage or something. So are they licensed as a business? And that would be more my question.
So, you mind if I touch that one?
Absolutely.
I can think of two really good examples, but on different ends of the spectrum there. So we have up on the east hill, and I forget the address, it doesn't matter for, for now, but a gentleman who has a permit to operate a bit of a, does a little fixer-up, and does some, you know, he'll, he'll work on your car, but under that permit, and Jill, you may know a little bit more about this, he's only to have so many at a time at the property. So under his business license, he can only have, I think it's two vehicles at a time...
Other than his own.
Other than his own, so, but then, I'll take the other end of the spectrum, where we have another gentleman on the west side who works on vehicles, and probably has fourteen of them there right now.
Well, that's exactly one of...
He doesn't have a license to do it, because he's not doing it as a business, he's doing it as a hobby.
Oh.
Right, it's just a hobby, it's something that passes the time, and I, I venture to guess there's a good dozen vehicles there right now.
In his backyard.
But there...
In the front, both front and backyard, have all kinds of them.
Did he used to be my neighbor?
But there is a difference between, but there is a difference between parking on the street and parking them all over your yard, right? All over your yard, we can get into the unsightly, so there's something that can be done in regards to that. But the street parking, which essentially was the ask here, was essentially what we're hearing is, we can't do anything about it, is my understanding.
There's no law, please.
There's nothing that can help us with this. Jeff?
I learned this year, there's a significant cost to have multiple vehicles, because my daughter now drives, and I have a third vehicle, and that hurt real bad, right?
I've got three hundred and twenty of us that drive.
And so there is kind of, there's a financial burden to having registered and insured multiple vehicles, that, which is incredible when I see how many are registered to an individual.
Right.
Because I know what the insurance costs now.
So, and just to touch on that, one of the high complaint areas, um, one that I was contacted about on Friday, that one, you're looking at six different registered owners. I ran all the plates the day you called me. So there's six different registered owners there, or, see, I have five or six, so we're good.
So we were having this discussion about, okay, we could say, maybe hypothetically, you can only have so many vehicles registered to an owner or property, but again, in this case, they're registered to...
And Carson is also super difficult, because when you go get your registration, you give your P.O. box. So when I query a plate, it comes up as P.O. box XXXX, and I have no idea what physical address that's associated to it.
Right.
Or even if it is, like, um, I've run places that have sat on the street for years, and they go back to Red Deer, because that was the last place that that vehicle was registered.
Okay.
So...
Okay, Counselor Court.
Not to belabor this, nor take too much longer, but there are other issues we need to look at and deal with if we're gonna start moving around on this. You got, you got bed and breakfast, you've got all kinds of things where people come, you got multiple, like, the next-door neighbors have got a couple of their girls living with them right now, they got vehicles, I mean, it's just, uh, just need to be cautious when we look at this, that's all.
Thank you. Brad, did you have anything else on this?
Uh, I don't, I'm open to suggestions from, from counsel, I, I...
You don't have a quick fix for us?
I'm lost, but it's, it's not lost for me that it is a nuisance, it's just, I don't have the tools...
The tools to do the research, yeah.
Legal.
I don't think any law enforcement really does to go and...
Perfect.
Um, the only other thing I was gonna mention was, is I was in contact with AMVIC peace officers. I did not know that we had AMVIC, Alberta Motor Vehicle Insurance, something around there. I didn't realize AMVIC had peace officers, and I was approached by one just the other day, and so I sent her an email, she's away, and I'm just waiting for a reply back, and if she says, yeah, you know what, there is something I can do, she can do about it...
Okay.
Then great, but I don't think that there's going to be, it was a long stretch, I think.
Okay, we appreciate you looking into it. Jeff?
So the other thing Brad and I talked about is really just leaning hard on the derelict vehicle under the unsightly premise.
Right.
And, and just really see how far we can push that, frankly, in some cases, you know, so say, okay, yeah, it's registered and insured, it's chock full of garbage, and has debris, hasn't moved in months, we're gonna call it unsightly.
Yeah.
And let's see where this goes.
See where it goes, yeah.
Biggest ones there are gonna be ones that were in collisions.
Right.
If you get in a collision, and you get your tow, your car towed home, now it sits there for months on end because it's smashed.
Right.
Well, no, no.
Okay.
Our mobile home use for a storage unit?
Okay, well, thank you very much, I think we'll turn the rest of the time on to our strategic plan with Jeff.
I have one more I wanna touch with Brad today.
Okay.
Point eleven, investigate a bylaw amendment to prohibit residents from slightly ordering against taking materials from the transfer station. So I knew this rang familiar somewhere.
Yeah, it does.
And lo and behold, there's a policy about this. Now, the policy in and of itself is a bit problematic. Um, one, because it also includes the M.D. end of that policy, which I find, again, it doesn't bother me, I just don't think we could ever enforce that, because it's not my jurisdiction. And the other thing, it's a policy, not a bylaw, so one of the things I wanted to bring up is, um, the policy talks about, it's basically what it says, if you have an unsightly order in the town or the M.D., you can't take things from the transfer station, so fair enough. Um, but what I'm wondering if we want to do, and why I wanted to talk about this with Brad here, is we could potentially add a clause in the garbage bylaw that would associate a fine with that. Because right now, there's no penalty. What the policy essentially says is, hey, staff, don't let people take stuff. That's the simplest form of what the policy says, but so if I go do it anyway, frankly, so what? There's no, there's no penalty associated with it, you can't compliance. So our thought, we were just talking about, maybe we made one.
And just attach it to that.
And we have to put it in the bylaw, so it wouldn't work as a policy, because we'd never be able to enforce it in a policy.
Yeah.
But we could make a small addendum to the bylaw, so I was just curious about thoughts on that from the group.
Love it. Mayor?
I would recommend that administration creates an addend, a new bylaw?
No, just, uh...
An addendum?
Yeah, it would be an amendment to the garbage bylaw.
Amendment to the garbage bylaw regarding taking material from the transfer station or waste collection sites.
So my question for counsel is, are you looking at prohibiting every person from removing things from the transfer station, or are we prohibiting only people who we select from removing things from the transfer station?
Problem, problematic.
Well, I think we worded it, if they have an unsightly order, which we've...
That's, that's in there.
So that means if we have an offender, that one should definitely be prohibited from taking stuff. Now, how do you catch him, right? So that's the next question?
Nope, I have no problem with that, there's beautiful cameras at the transfer station, they'll see a vehicle leaving, and as long as I know what they drive, I can go back and...
Counselor Salk?
Right, I just wanted to be clear that we are going only for the unsightly premise, because there are a lot of people go out and get parts, and we don't care, it's recycling.
Yeah.
You bet. Yeah, my intention is only if you have an unsightly order during that period, you cannot take from the transfer station.
Yeah.
Which was the whole idea.
Brad?
I look at that, and I'm curious as to how that would play out...
At court?
In court.
That's what I was...
Because if I charged somebody with that, my, if I was charged with it, my first argument was, well, why can't he do it?
Because he just has an unsightly premise.
The community is saying, because I'm that guy, I'm not allowed to go and do this because of my mental disability, so I just wanted that to be considered. I agree, I'm, I'm fully backed with it, I will write the tickets all day long, no problem with it.
Well, unless it's challenged in court, we will never know how it pans out.
Yeah.
Counselor Drew?
No, I was just gonna say that, let's proceed, and I guess, when it gets thrown out of court, then we'll have to change the bylaw, right?
Yeah.
So you have a recommendation on the floor?
Yeah. Any questions? All in favor?
Hey, thank you, that was it, Brad. You have your turn.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad, thank you.
From now, we'll turn the time over to Jeff.
Yeah.
Bring your old chair.
Um, I don't want, well, I'll, I'll tell you the moral of the story, I didn't, I didn't order food tonight, so I don't wanna take much more than an hour for the rest of the meeting, but I did want some feedback on a couple of these items. You must see I posed some questions, just to have some discussion about, some of these things feel a little stalled, um, and, and so I just wanna talk about kind of what's next, what are we looking at here, and some may be, of course, we're gonna wait, we're gonna gather information, whatever that looks like, it's fine. Um, so, Counselor Brown, are you okay if I just start working through it?
Please, please do.
So the first one, it's our proposal to Glenn Motz, which I put in the background here. I'm wondering, are we, are we just, do we wanna wait post-election, or do we want to pursue this differently? Um, I have no indication of how this is gonna play out right now, I simply don't. Um, so I wanted a little feedback, if we sit on it for a bit here, or if we start trying to attack it from different angles.
Counselor Salk?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, actually, on this one. One is that the feedback we got from Mr. Motz was somewhat promising, and so I guess he was pursuing it both with the current government, and also from the notion that if they form the next government, there may be some positive traction there. The second thing is that there is, um, I got a call from a citizen who has worked with some First Nations folks, who would be prepared, if the funding were in place, to step up and make application for, uh...
A friendship?
Friendship center.
No.
Mayor?
So, I was thinking in the same kind of line of ideas, we understand that for a friendship centered, to obtain funding at a provincial level, or federal for that matter, it has to originate from first indigenous, uh, person, and we understand that, that when that, those champions are there, then the process can move faster and obtain funding. So is that somebody of indigenous background, because I spoke...
I have balls, I'm gonna draw right there.
Eat a mite yesterday.
Sorry. Anyway, pass on, it's not going to work. I got to go. So, I got to go.
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think my thought is, I would like to wait for at least another, I don't know, few weeks.
You sounded like that yesterday, too, so she's...
Possibly get further feedback from us. There is an individual who is not First Nations, but has First Nations people organized who would be willing to pursue it, but to me, it's a moot point to pursue it if there isn't going to be an interest on behalf of the government to fund it.
Counselor Court.
Just clarification, a friendship center, would that be on reserve or off reserve?
They're off.
They're off reserve?
Yeah.
Like the one in Lethbridge, okay, good.
Yeah, no, that's great, and I'm happy to do that, I'll bring this back up, potentially in the main committee meeting.
Okay.
Um, we'll have a discussion about the CDMC, and I'll also touch base with Mr. Motz's office, just to say, you know, is there anything we can do at this point? What would you like from us? Just make sure I stay in the loop with them.
Sounds good. Counselors?
Yeah, I think that he had made a, a pitch with the current Minister of Indigenous Affairs, Yeah, I think that he had made a pitch with the current Minister of Indigenous Affairs, so it would be who of us to follow up with him to see if that minister is.
Yeah, we'll do, thank you. The next is, we get into some of these public safety pieces on the next page, seven through 10. And so what we initially had talked about is, you know, when we assemble a truth and reconciliation committee, do we want to get feedback from that group on these? Because there is a lot of, I would say, consultation from the First Nation and influence here. And that may still be the answer.
Yep.
I think on number seven, though, this is something we could, there's probably some that don't have that political ramification. If we're looking at just public safety pieces, that we could start on prior to truth and reconciliation. There's some that will come out of that too, I think. But locking your cars and that kind of thing, there's not a racial bend on those at all. They're just general safety pieces. So I wondered if there was a, an initial inventory of topics we can start on now? And then as we get developing through this committee, then some of those can come out and we'll just continue it on. But we can get going on this in some form now. It's a decent time of year to work on those two.
So you're asking us for an inventory of topics?
Yeah, so we wanted to do short public safety clips.
Counselor Salk?
I think this is basically something that was brought up in our meeting with the RCMP and their strategic plan for the next year. So that would, item number seven is something that's fairly straightforward. Lock your car, lock the doors in your house when you're away, doesn't matter how long you're gone for. Public safety tips to just keep yourself and your neighborhood safe. And.
Keep it all alive.
Do you want more than that from us, Jeff?
Just if there's any other areas you feel would be a good first go, good priority, otherwise we'll start. I mean, we do right now, we do like traffic awareness, Brad already does that.
Right.
So he'll do a campaign on the law with every month. This month is about distracted driving. This month is about, you know, confiscation. We already do that. But if there's anything else, then just send it our way. And we'll get going on some of those that aren't involving the truth and reconciliation committees.
Okay, sounds good.
The billboard, I put some information in your background. We've talked about this a bit in the office, I stewed on it. These can be very polarizing. And so I wanted to have some discussion on, we talked about having billboard, a billboard that advertised the town's position on Panhandle. And so I put some examples in your background about Salt Lake City did one that created quite a bit of public backlash. Was it Seattle? Somewhere in Washington, there was one, one out east. And you see this varying degree of public support for these types of campaigns? Because some say that you're, you're compounding the problem of, you're making a bold and wide brush assumption about homeless or marginalized.
Mayor?
That they all abuse the money they're given, which may not be true. And so I just wanted to have, we can start developing this message a little more, but there is gonna be political ramification here. It will not be universally accepted, is my guess, when you make a strong.
Understand.
Position like that. So I just want us to go very carefully into this. So any feedback on that would be appreciated before we start locking up anything. We can look to some of these cities to see what was worded well and what worked and that kind of thing. There's also some kind of what didn't.
Counselor Clark?
So why do we need the billboard on the perimeter of town? I mean, every store downtown has a sign up saying that there's no Panhandling. Are we telling people not to come into town, that are driving in from wherever in the Panhandle? And we know where our Panhandlers are coming from, but.
So this was talked about at your last planning session, I think, if I interpreted correctly, it was just so it was clear that in the community, here's our kind of collective position on.
Help us.
On the matter.
Right.
So, yeah, I just, we need to walk into this very carefully.
Counselor Drew?
With that in mind, are we thinking about maybe some training for the general public as to how to handle that issue when it comes up?
Right.
I just know as a store owner, I have somebody every day that sees me and asks me for some, and every day I say, same, same message as you got yesterday. Sorry, I can't help you right now, that kind of thing, right? And I just wondered if we, with a vulnerable seniors population and, you know, that, if we need to do something along that lines, I don't, I don't know.
Mayor?
You know, when you approach those who are still trying to get something out of us, I always say, they always say, well, I need some money for food. And I said, there is a soup kitchen and they have food for you. Make sure you use it. And that's all what I say. And I don't ask for anything else. That is a message that should be given. We are contributing to that fund. There's nothing wrong with people saying, we are contributing to that fund. Use the soup kitchen, it's there for you.
Counselor Barnes?
In that regard, what are the hours of the soup kitchen? Are they open every day?
I just wonder.
Through the winter.
And so.
We know that.
There's two freezers full of sandwiches up there and every day they take some out and there are sandwiches there for them to eat.
And there is hot meal.
And that's a good answer to them.
There is hot meal four times, four days a week.
Four days a week.
And there are leftovers that I use.
Yeah.
After the days that there is no cooked meal brought there.
Yeah.
There's always some leftovers for the Friday.
Counselor Drew?
Who's first?
Counselor Drew?
Okay.
It doesn't solve the issue.
But, but I think some of the general public doesn't know that information, that there's a soup kitchen or that there's meals and food available and so that.
Well, then we could do a better job.
I think that kind of ammunition, no, I shouldn't, no, let's not say ammunition.
Information.
That kind of information will help.
The message.
A person who may be feeling guilty and saying, oh yeah, I better give some money, they can say, well, actually, down the street, there's.
Yeah.
Counselor Salk?
Sorry. I think the simple answer is, one, there is food available and you don't have to clarify what days. There's food available at the shelter kitchen, is what they prefer to call it.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, what's a new name? The shelter?
Food available at the shelter kitchen, if you.
Okay, yeah, the soup kitchen is not what it should be referred as, I'm sorry.
And that's the simple answer.
So do you want us to pursue this billboard idea at this point? Or should we look at maybe more, let's call it feet on the ground down.
Agreed.
Street education campaign.
Yeah, agreed.
Here's what's available, here's what, how you can appropriately refer people to, okay, that's fine, that's great. We'll shift gears on that just a little bit. We've done something, when Malcolm was here, he did put a brochure that he took to every business.
Yeah, he did.
And we'll, we'll refresh that and work with probably Tia on making sure we understand the whims and wingers of the shelter and what's available. So that's just great. We'll do that for now, we'll shift gears on that a little bit.
Sounds good.
The COP.
Mayor, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
What I was going to say before I had my coughing attack, is that the person that are looking after the shelter kitchen are the one who told me that they could garner support from the indigenous community to start the friendship center application.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I got a call from one of the individuals today that said that they did have some people lined up. A recommendation before you left, Mayor, was that, let's leave this with administration to talk to Mr. Motz, to see where we're at with our, because he's recently talked to the Minister of Indigenous Affairs and see if there's any.
Right, because if that was the case, it's becoming more important now than ever because the shelter kitchen is not intended to be open after April.
Right.
Okay, Brad?
Okay, COP program, I want to do a quick update. I've met with Jeremy and Sarah, talked to them about what their needs are. I know we had either or, I think both Brad and Ryan have attended the most recent COP meeting. So they're not looking to us to take on a lot with that program. They recognize there's some struggles right now in membership, inactive membership. They don't have many, that's the problem. So I'm not really sure how far to try and assert our position into this group because they're not asking. We've offered help, they're not, they're not asking for any, but please support us and come to a meeting. You know, we'd love to have Brad there when he can, great. So my feeling is right now, one of the biggest concerns for them is that relationship with the RCMP.
Right.
I don't think it's, I don't want to make it sound like it's negative, it's just not what it was. And I think we heard that a bit from the sergeant last week at the meeting we attended there, some of us did. And I'm just wondering if our role right now is just to simply through the policing committee, try and put that together. I just don't feel like I want to go in and usurp.
No.
This volunteer-led group because they're, you know, they're doing, they're great, great, doing great work. They have their frustrations too. So I just want a little discussion on how far we push that from an administrative point of view.
Mayor?
Would it be useful if at the next police committee, we were to invite Jeremy and his wife to come and address some of the issues possibly? And see if we can find some solutions?
I can certainly do that, yeah.
Thanks.
Counselor Barnes?
Where's the funding come from? Do they get some provincial funding or?
They're exclusively volunteer-driven. We do budget $3,000 a year.
Okay.
And we leave it to the discretion of that group as to how they want us to use it. So a couple of years ago, for example, they wanted new vests, new safety vests or flight vests. Now, we did not spend $3,000, we spent about $300.
Yeah.
But in that year, that's what they were after.
Do they ever use this for, that money for gas for their vehicles?
No, this group doesn't. They did historically and this group chose, chooses not to. Now they've done turkeys and hams at Christmas for their members, for example. We bought some gift cards one year for their different members. So we've kind of allowed them some discretion to requisition us up to that amount. And I'm relatively comfortable with that because I've never seen them be excessive with that.
No.
That's probably as far as we need to assert anything.
So I'll try and plug them into our policing committee, if not, maybe not every time, but on a somewhat regular basis, semi-annual basis or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Neighborhood watch, block parent, block migrant. So these were, we've talked about this before, this is one of those interesting ones where there used to be funding to pay a coordinator and pay some of those costs, it's not there anymore. And so the question is, and I was not, when I asked my question over on the right-hand side, I was not trying to be facetious at all, but is there a call for programs? Are we hearing, why don't we have block parenting cards? Now, I haven't solicited that information from the public, but I'm not hearing it either. So I initially think about, okay, are we trying to create a solution for a need that doesn't exist? And is that smart? Now, there's certainly no harm in these programs at all yet. I can't see where it can go south on yet. But we do need to figure out how we're going to do this because they simply, there's no base from where, they used to be FCSS programs, but I'm talking five years ago.
Yeah.
And so there isn't that base to start from like we used to have. And we don't have people in the community clamoring to volunteer for it, although we haven't solicited that either.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm not 100% sure where to go with it. And again, a lot of times, these are grassroots programs that aren't usually connected to municipality. There's no harm in being connected to the municipality. We want to do that, we want to drive those programs. I want to throw that out there.
As far as my own personal opinion on the welcome wagon, I feel like there isn't a need like there used to be for it. I think there used to be a high need for it, but I think with today's social media and people interacting more in different things, I feel like that's not as high of a need as it was as far as the block parents. Back in the day, that was a pretty amazing program. You know, as you're walking home, if you were scared, you'd look in the window and you'd see that sign and it was a safe place for you to go. I hate to say that it's not important, but I think one of the beautiful things about Cardston is, we know a lot of the people and as my kids have been walking home, they've been scared and so they'll jump in Gary Salk's place, you know what I mean? They'll, they'll know somebody and they'll go there. So I don't know about the block parents, but the welcome wagon, I don't feel like there's a need. Counsel, what do you think? Counselor Clark?
I don't think so. I think as neighbors move into this community, people go over to take them.
Yeah.
That's just kind of how it is.
It's kind of Cardston.
It is kind of a Cardston thing.
Yeah.
I've just seen a shift personally on social media, somebody moves into town, hi, I'm new here, what is there for that, that, that.
Right.
Boom.
Parent link center.
Yeah.
Right.
It is different right now, that doesn't work for everyone.
No.
But neither does the welcome wagon.
Right.
So I don't know, it's very interesting. It's very hard to manage. I'll just put that out there administratively, because people move, come and go all the time and you're trying to figure out if they're renting and you don't know renters moving in. The realtors aren't aware.
Yeah.
It's tricky.
Very different than it used to be.
Any more thoughts on that? So should we just let it lie?
Sure.
Kate?
We talked about everything from on 11 and 14, so that's done. 16, I just wanted some really quick, I know this will go back to the golf advisory board and that's where it should lie till it's a little more formalized. I wanted to ask counsel a couple of questions on this rec, or the golf clubhouse conceptual drawing. We don't think that this is how it's gonna end at all. We just wanted to try and get some square footage. So I had some questions about, just any initial feedback on that, anything we should consider going in? Whether we want to get into spending thresholds tonight or not, I'm not too concerned because this deal needs to be worked through a bit. So just some comments on what we've got there so far.
Mayor?
I looked at the space and when I looked at the lounge area, or could be a reception area for a place maybe to have banquet or whatever, what is the capacity that you're thinking of if you're thinking banquet? Are you thinking 150, 200 people?
No.
What are you thinking?
I think the indoor seating, and again, this is just Brandon helping us put some sizes, it's about 80.
Yeah, just under.
Okay, so it could be a small party.
The reason that number is that would be a, the common amount in a tournament.
All right, so there's no idea to entertain it for a wedding or for something like that?
Correct.
It could be.
Yeah, the sky's the limit as far as size, it's just the dollar follows.
Right, exactly.
So we're trying to find something there where, okay, we have some outdoor seating, if we can put 80 inside and if you have an exceptionally big tournament, you got another 20 outside.
What I would add to this is last night, the golf course had their open house and they had over 30 people at that meeting. Counselor Salk and I were there representing counsel and they were quite interested in the, we had the drawings, Jeff had the drawings and, and the budget and all sorts of things him and Alex put forward to them, but they were quite interested in talking about having, of course, a facility for them and they were pretty excited about. And none of them balked at the size, they all thought that was a pretty average size. Counselor Salk?
Yeah. And the other aspect of this is that, when you talk about, for instance, a wedding reception, we do them at the Tanner Center all the time.
Yeah, we have facilities.
And it's, but it's, it's a calling reception, so how many people do you need to seat?
Right, exactly.
80 is probably okay.
Yeah, because they come and go anyway.
You could have, it could be used, and there's opportunities for this to be used in the wintertime for other formal dinners, so to speak, but.
Right. No, just, I just was wondering, as a source of revenue, can they have weddings and stuff like that?
Let's just say I got some of the golf club members interested, because I spent two and a half hours this afternoon going over the conceptual idea of a clubhouse.
Yeah. So we're trying to, and Brandon's been drafting just some ideas for us. We've already learned that, for example, the kitchen would probably need to bump out, even though we're not trying to have a full-blown stainless steel walk-in freezer commercial kitchen.
Right.
It probably does need a few more square feet on that. But we're trying to find that fine line between not having an operationally burdensome facility to deal with, but at the same time, being able to have 80 golfers inside.
Right. Which is what was brought across last night. They want a place to come in and have something to drink and more than a sandwich they would love, is what they kept bringing up. Counselor Salk?
I think I can sort of sum up the feeling from the golf association, the golf members is, can we please stop talking about a clubhouse and do something instead?
And how can we help?
Yes, and how, and they are more than happy to start changing the dynamics of our golf committee so that they can be in a position to fundraise and seed grants that we can't.
They were.
So the governance model doesn't necessarily have to be what we have, but we need to be open enough to the idea to let them.
So.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind me asking, from this conceptual drawing, what's your next step moving forward?
So I think what, Alex and I talked about this briefly, we'd like to just tweak this a little bit over the next few weeks a little more, we're gonna get more feedback. We asked a group last night to send us feedback and thoughts. And then we're gonna hit a point where we need to actually do a bit more of a design, at least an elevation.
Right.
And a little more of a design so that we can put a cost to it.
Right.
And we have a rough number, but really, we have nothing more than just an estimate. So we'll hit a point where I'll be coming back to counsel saying, you know, it's gonna cost us $6,000 to do two elevations and a floor plan or something.
Right.
Based on this, but we haven't had to pay outside labor.
Right.
To this, at this point to manipulate as much as we have. We've gone through a number of conceptions, this is just the one administratively we chose to take to the group.
Go ahead.
So to carry on with the idea then, what's a reasonable timeline when you can see a blueprint ready to do something with?
Not to be complicated, but defining blueprint construction drawings is probably a little ways down the road because we can start fundraising, we can start doing all that because we can do estimates off of elevations and floor plans, but to go into the whole electrical design, HVAC design, plumbing design, I don't know that we need to even do that for a while. I think we're okay there for just a little bit, but in maybe May, June?
Okay.
We can start to solidify, okay, this seems to be what people are looking for, we're getting good comments, we're just kind of looking at different variations of the same thing for a while. Because we have to put something that people can look at and see and.
Yeah, visualize.
Yeah, it's been so conceptual for.
Yeah.
The whole 10 years I've been with the town, it's just always been about the eventual clubhouse. But we've never had anything to really point to.
And something that was brought out by one of the members last night was, and I mean, he was a golfer, but he just said he's, he lives in the town of Cardston, he pays taxes here, but he doesn't want his taxes going up because they got a brand-new golf house. He was crystal clear on that, right? And so I think, I think having them a part of the fundraising and the concept and all of that is our biggest asset because then we're, go ahead.
You're asking where the money tree was coming from then, that they didn't want to?
I didn't, because, you know, but yeah. Correct, Counselor Barnes.
So just looking at the, the floor plan here, I, I look at it very conservatively. You're looking at $250 a square foot, you've got a million-dollar building here right now.
Yep.
Or more, or more. I mean, when you start getting these jet outs, these round, that's, I assume those are all windows to overlook the golf course?
Sorry.
Well, that's patio, that's an exterior, okay. All right, so, yeah, you're probably looking at 1.2, 1.3 million for that.
So chump change, yeah. Counselor Salk?
Yeah. Where's that?
Let's.
Fundraising.
No, let's not. I mean, I've had other contractors who I've had conversations with. If we do it a certain way, we're looking at $150 a square foot.
That'd be great.
So let's, maybe, let's not get too bent above the cost right now, but let's.
So Jeff does that?
Yeah, it's great. I think the other thing I'd like to do is to, when we do an elevation and a bit more of a conceptual, we start to break this down into components because what came out last night is, well, I'd be willing to help with this, and I can help with this, and I know a guy who's a plumber that can do this.
Right, yeah.
And all of a sudden, if you say, okay, here's, here's that.
That's how you bring a brief down.
Who would contribute here?
Right.
Who would contribute here? And I said last night, well, I can shingle a roof, but I'm not running like.
Electrical.
Electrical.
Right.
That's not my thing.
Right.
But yeah, I could jump in on this component.
Right.
And try and help where I can. So we can kind of look at it in that more communal construction sense to some degree.
Which is how we build the soccer park, essentially, so.
I mean, we have to have professionals in search.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
This isn't an elders' corn project.
No.
If it's done right, yeah.
So are we good? Can we move past this one and go to the next?
And the next one could be a huge conversation. I just want something fairly specific here. It's on, it's on the Westwind Agreement, so I want to get back to the table on that one.
Yep.
And I just want a couple of positions of the group before we do that.
Okay.
17-1?
Yes, correct. So my questions are, if it's our intention to take operational responsibility back, we all recognize there's costs with that. And are we okay with that? That's the question. Then it kind of leads into two, that if we're going to put all these, if we're going to take these costs back, are we going to then start to push back on School Division about their use of it? And, you know, start to, start to restrict that a little more to protect what we're doing it. Because they're going to want, this conversation and the agreement we have now came down to, who wanted control of the facility? And I don't mean that in any kind of negative way. We just had conflict around control. So Randy would fertilize, water, and then the football team would be on the 50-yard line. You know, up and down, and up and down, and up and down. And so then there'd be conflict. And so at the time Dexter said to the principals, if you want control, I can be, you control, just come to the cost. Well, the exact same argument comes back our way.
Right.
If we want control, it comes to the cost. So there's just this kind of political piece that I just want a little feedback about, about how we want to approach that.
Mayor.
So listening to your conversation, does it mean that we want control back? Is that the question?
Right, so for me, and I've mentioned this, I'm fine with the agreement the way it is because frankly, it, the, the user of the facility is in charge of maintaining the facility.
Exactly.
We can have a good debate about the condition of that maintenance.
Thank you.
No debate there, but they're the user. So I, I've been, I've been a little hesitant to say, hey, we, we want to make it better for you to continue to use it.
Right.
But it's.
Right. Counselor.
Can we divide up responsibilities for Lions Park? Because they're getting phone calls in the summer wanting to book the Shelter there. I mean, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Something like that needs to be stayed with the town, although the football and baseball field, they may be able to.
The booking's been problematic, there's no question about that, because we have staff here year-round and they don't.
Yeah.
So you want to book your class reunion in August, and you call in July.
No answer, yeah.
So we agree that's got to change. We've got to do something different there. First.
Mayor.
Is there also a possibility to kind of work out a plan to avoid, where, where are you going to talk?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry. To avoid the, the problem between our park manager and the Westwind School Division? Be able to kind of solidify a little bit or start to be more descriptive about what we expect and the timing when we do the sowing of the seed for the, the park? Maybe there are some restrictions to the use of that park. I mean, for two weeks, it has to grow.
I think one of the things that's important is very similar to what the mayor is saying, and we've kind of done it with the Agri Dome when we've, when we've designed a new contract, a joint use agreement with them, we've clarified some things rather than have such a broad umbrella, right?
Yeah.
Maybe, I, I think that's where you're going. If we, if we are very on point with, this is our expectation, this is the level, this is, and it's not just us telling them. I mean, when you and I met with them, they were great to work with and very upfront about, yeah, you know, maybe we need to get better at that. And so I think that if we sat down with them and laid out our thoughts and our views of the people we represent in the town of Cardston, and they come with their ideas from Westwind, I feel like that, that would bring a lot to the table, and I feel like being able to clarify some of those points would, is, it's, it's, it's just better. Counselor.
I think the mayor hit on a very big issue with, between the park manager and the use of that field. Time frame where they've got to be on it, but he thinks, but he has a certain time frame where he can work on this.
Correct.
Somehow they've got to come together on that because if you go down to practice football and the sprinklers been on all night, you have a problem.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and I think it's a matter of communication.
Counselor.
I also think if we're going to, if we're going to revisit this agreement, that there has to be some specific things laid out. So the Westwind School Division will be doing this and this and this, and the town of Cardston will be responsible for this and this and this so that it's not just a broad.
Agreed.
Agreement that says this is kind of what we think we'd like to do.
Yeah.
And it has to be pretty specific when it comes.
The whole issue is, the whole issue here, we wouldn't have an issue if they, they, they're the only high school in Alberta that's not a green space.
Correct.
Their green space is the Lions Park.
Right.
So that's why we've got to get something hammered out here.
That's right.
When you talk to Mr. Murray, the principal, he'll tell you, we should be contributing to green space for the hospital.
Yep.
We use it for phys ed, we use it for all of our outdoor sporting activities. We, there's not a debate from that side necessarily. There's a logistics piece here.
Correct.
Communication logistic, I would say.
So does that keep you?
Yeah, I'll set up with them again, I'll let you know.
Yep, sounds good.
I just did, wanted to make sure before we go back into that, that we're good to go. And other than that, the only other thing I had there was fees. We had that recommendation, but we'll discuss that some more. I, I had it on there, but I'm not too concerned that that can't evolve as we start to negotiate with them a little bit.
Okay.
We come back to them with that piece that we're the only town that charges them facilities. And that might be something that former years we need to talk about.
Yeah.
A little more. That might be the place to start having some.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was my questions and your teaching.
Counselor, is there anything else you wanted to ask Jeff on any of these topics?
That's good.
All right, let's proceed then. So let's go to our correspondents.
You have a rotary club question?
Oh yeah, sorry, 7Cs. So Kirsten Rotary Club, so it's my understanding that the president, Sharon Jensen, she is the president of the Rotary Club.
No, she's.
She's not the president.
The president? What is she?
She's, she's.
She's chairing it.
She's chairing that subcommittee.
So a recommendation to Counsel to appoint someone for the Rotary Council is what her letter is requesting. So wondering what your thoughts are on that. Counselor Court.
I asked a specific question when he was here about community involvement.
Yes.
He didn't seem to think it would go very far.
Which was concerning.
I don't know, I guess it could be a feel-good, whatever it is, but I don't think it's going to make any difference if we get a hospital in mind.
Am I, am I looking at the wrong paper? Is that this one?
Yes.
No, that's the one. I, I really think, I would be willing to be there.
I, I think the angle for the Rotarians is.
No, 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 this one is important.
Is having a conduit for the priorities of the Blood Tribe, establishing that need from the Blood Tribe.
Okay.
Right.
No, this is a very important meeting. On the contrary, it is one where they want to have a joint position between the Blood Tribe, the town and the county towards that political pressure towards the hospital. On the contrary, we need to be there. I will be there.
Okay.
So the mayor will represent us on that?
Someone's made a recommendation to appoint her?
Go ahead, Counselor.
I'll make the recommendation that the mayor be appointed to the Health Advisory Committee that the Rotarians are establishing that's regarding the hospital.
Any questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Now we'll go to the correspondents.
Let's go to the correspondents.
So we've got our MSI funding notice, that is the first one. It's just giving us the heads-up on the funding notice that has been given of March 31st, and it ends March 31st, 2020?
Two.
Twenty-two.
Or sorry, 2022.
The contracts today to extend our MSI agreement to 2022, so the NDP is trying to lock that all up right now for elections.
Okay, and.
Do we have any dollars and cents?
No, but whatever comes, I'll be happy.
Whatever comes.
Status quo, which is good.
It'd be status quo at least.
So far.
Yeah.
Counselor Drew thought we were going to get 11.3 billion.
That would be perfect, right?
Golf course.
Done, done.
We're good. I like that.
Okay, moving on, the next one is 9B. It is a thank you from the Cardston Hospital for our $500.
Auxiliary.
I'm getting there. For the $500 donation to put towards buying our overhead light of the ER emergency room. And that is from the Ladies Auxiliary Association at the Cardston Hospital. So we appreciate their thank you note.
So do we not have an overhead light before we got this one?
Okay, let me tell you the story since I'm an auxiliary.
My wife works in that.
Right. The, the light I have is not sufficient to deal with a very micro problem like sharp nails that is under the skin.
Right, right.
Thing like that. And so there they have an operating room light, which is very expensive, by the way. It costs thousands of dollars.
I'm understanding where you're coming from.
Places that trouble light they got from the garage or what?
Pretty much, yeah. Because we don't need a new hospital.
Someone using her iPhone.
So that was a doctor recommendation.
Perfect. So 9C, it is a letter from Barry Moroshito from AUMA Resource Communities of Canada Information. Counselor Salk?
I'll make a recommendation that our next meeting of Counsel, we adopt the motion that AUMA is recommending regarding resource communities.
Questions? All in favor?
So is I going to bring that at FCM, I understand?
That's a very good idea.
In support of that, we need to start pushing back.
Okay.
I mean, our province is hurting, and the rest of the country may not understand that, so we need to start pushing back on this.
Get a little bit louder.
Well, I, I think resources development is so important.
No, it's, it's a very good motion.
Yeah.
So 10 confidential items, we don't have any, so Counselor.
Look to adjourn. Okay, Mayor, you got it.
All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just cover the ballgame.
Good job.
I don't think it's much of a.